Okay, so welcome to the January 16th meeting of the Planning Commission. This is a move of our regular January meeting. Our February meeting is on February 6th, normal time. We wanted to talk tonight about two items. First, North Sea Road, and second, we wanted to catch up on where the conversations about a potential sewer. So, North Sea Road, I think we talked last time and agreed that we would like to do a study and do more analysis of the road to help guide us on what the options might be. And I spoke to the mayor, who agreed that that was a good approach, and asked us to put together a proposal for the trustees. And I spoke to Chick Voorhees, who's gonna put together a proposal for Nelson Pope. And so, wanted to talk tonight about what we think that study should include, what we'd like to see in the study, and hopefully that will then give us some options of what we do next. So, I wrote down some things I thought we might put in the study and wanted to sort of open up the conversation about what might be in it. First, I'm assuming, but again, let's talk about it tonight, that this would cover the area from Bowden Square to the highway, which is something Chick thought was a cohesive, potentially a fairly coherent corridor. We talked, I asked, we talked for a while and he agreed, we probably want to look at it both as one continuous corridor and then also look at the area north of the train trestle and south of the train trestle, because they're somewhat different. Certainly, the road capacity right now is different. So, the first thing is a traffic study, look at what the traffic flow is now and what the options would be to accommodate additional traffic. And he's gonna try to use some very industry-standard estimates to look at what additional traffic would be created by potential new uses on the road. So, if retail uses were to increase, to what extent, there would be additional traffic? And then, if residential or institutional use would increase, what would be the potential additional traffic on the corridor? And, you know, I think he wanted to look at it two ways. One is what the ability would be to address the capacity within the current roadway. And then, second, and this is obviously particularly between the trestle and Bowden Square. And then, secondly, what potential ability there would be to increase the width or capacity of the roadway if we said, we don't want to only stay within the current roadway width, but at least look at what we need to increase it. Second thing we talked about is sort of begin to look at potential design requirements for the road if uses increase, if uses change, sorry. Because the design requirements now really relate to office buildings, they're gonna be different if, I think, if we change the uses. And I also think it would be fair to say, the current design requirements have not been overly successful, shall we say?
Yeah, I would say that the design requirements should be looked at regardless of the
Correct, correct. I mean, the road now is not particularly attractive, there's not, I don't think there's a consistent look to the road. Every property has been developed in a different way.
Especially when it look at like an entrance into the village.
Right, 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 right. If you think of it as an entrance, it certainly, there's no coherent approach to how you come in. Third is, we want to do a study that goes through each site along the road and put it into how it's used, do an analysis of how it's used, and then how it relates to the current zoning classifications that exist in the village, and do that on a site-by-site And then, two other things we talked about, one is, is to, you know, do a sort of, how should I put it, a sort of a broad look at what economic factors there are in the village right now, particularly, you know, to the extent that we think office use is not growing, sort of do a little analysis of that. Do this a very broad sweep, because we're not suddenly, I don't think we're looking, talking about getting in the weeds, economic, and look generally at the amount of retail in the village and what's happened and how much is projected in the future. And also the same with residential use. Then, one of the things that he came up with that I thought was potentially very helpful is to look at what other villages on Long Island that they've worked with have done on roads of this type. And interesting enough, he said that a number of villages that they work with have looked at this type of road recently, not quite in the downtown, but not quite highway either, the sort of what he calls a connector road.
Who's he, Chuck?
Chick, yeah. And he thought that this would be maybe one way we could look at this, is what are other villages doing in this circumstance?
That'd be very interesting.
And I thought that would be a really interesting thing.
Especially the size of the village.
Right, right, right. And look at what other villages have done on roads like this, and maybe we can also think of what roads in the East End, we think, or villages in the East End might have a road. You know, is this like Newtown Lane, or is this like, you know, the other Torson Lane, as I call it in East Hampton? You know, the roads that are sort of not quite the downtown road, but are certainly still busy and connector roads. So, those were the things that we talked about, and I wanted to sort of throw open first for the commission and then anyone in the audience, anything else they think we should be looking at.
Well, it sounds like a mouthful.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds very comprehensive.
Well, I think it should be, because I guess when, you know, and I think this is sort of to me what came out of the last meeting, was we want to first do a more thorough analysis of the road and say, okay, given that, what seems to be the right thing to do going forward? I think we all agree that the current zoning doesn't seem to be working, it's not producing a good result, we're not getting good design, we're not getting buildings that are economically productive, it's not accomplishing anything right now.
Right, and the owners aren't happy.
The owners aren't happy, very importantly. So, then the next question is, what do you do? And I think we all thought, for us to be able to say what we should do, we need to sort of begin to do a better analysis and then understand what our options are, so...
Maybe the only thing that I would add, maybe to look into, would be, what are the options in terms of rezoning? Should it be, you know, complete rezoning, should it be an overlay?
Right, 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 right.
Should it be, you know, what's available in terms of encouragement of redevelopment?
Yep, yep.
Although I think we discussed that the overlay wasn't quite the best way to do, I would
Right, because there was a special
Something like we did with the master plan, something that's more
Yeah, I think we were sort of saying, if we're gonna do this, we want to really do it, not just do a half-step, but say, okay?
And a special exception, because that was proposed with
Right.
So, this way, it's done, everybody knows exactly where they stand, they know what to do, how to develop it, you know, without the questions, and in the future, they're gonna change it again or whatever. So, something that's more comprehensive, like we did with the Village Center, that something that's gonna really work for the long term.
Right, and right, and I think, Edwara's right, and I think we also thought, what works, we hope about the Village Center is, it's clear what the rules are and everyone's treated the same.
Right.
So, it's not like, well, because you, like, and I think that's an approach we thought would be good here also.
Right.
So, it's clear what you can do and everyone has the same opportunities.
But, yeah, as part of the study, because what had been proposed was a special exception.
Right, right. And that's not necessarily a bad approach, I think we just thought, you know, if we're gonna do this, let's really do it.
If we really think special exception is prone to politics, prone to influence, prone to subjectivity.
Right, right.
What you do is you just simplify the process for getting the building prepared.
Right.
By just saying, this is what the district is, and then have the overlay.
Right.
And save them time.
Right.
Everybody knows what they can do.
Yeah.
I hope the audience agrees with that approach.
I commend you, I mean, I proposed a special exception, thinking that was a lesser form of change, and that would be more palatable than the total review, but I commend you all for that. If I could have, if I thought it would have been more well-received, I would have proposed a total review, but I think you should do that.
Right.
So, I commend you for that.
Right. So, any comments, thoughts?
Does he, how long will it take?
We don't know yet. I was hoping to get that for tonight, I don't have it yet, but yes. How much time, and then obviously, what this is gonna cost?
Right.
And then, I think there's gonna be a conversation with the trustees on what the right way to fund the study is.
And should we get various proposals?
I think
Should we only get one proposal?
I think the thought is, since they're the village planner, we'll at least start there, and then if we think we need more, we'll go further, but
I would say we should try not to go to 12-month limit.
Correct.
Not to like the village planner, it takes five years.
I'm hoping this is not quite as controversial.
Right.
Right.
How actually, how large is this pieces in feet, miles, that miles?
Well, it's not, you know, it's not that, it's not that big a piece, it's really
It's not that long, it's about 1,100 feet.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a long stretch.
Not even a mile. About 1,100 feet, it's not even a mile.
Right, right. Because you're going, you know, from 39 to Bowden Square, it's not that long of a stretch.
And it's not even all the way, because it's part of the highway, part of it's really part of the highway.
Right, 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 right. So, it's not, it's not a long stretch.
Good. Maybe that was
Yeah, no, I think so, I think so. And I think, I think everyone agrees, barring anyone saying anything different, that stopping at Bowden Square is good, because I think it makes it simpler.
Yes.
Because once you get south of there, you're in a sort of small, more small grain zone.
Yeah, it's completely, unless it's not affected, it's not
Correct.
No, you take the fork and
Right, right. Suddenly, things are smaller and you're in a sort of different sort of area, so, we thought that would make it easier to get this done in a reasonable period of time.
I think you are pretty comprehensive, I think your approach is good.
Curious, the post office property, is that, I mean, that doesn't go by the same rules, does it?
Correct, correct. I think the reason to look at the post office property is, if something were to sum to end, because we've seen it in our own lifetime, if the post office were to move someday,
Then what?
And that went back into the zoning world, you'd want to have covered that.
Yes.
Right, as long as it's the postal service, they don't, they're not bound by local zoning.
Right, okay.
Well, the schools are the same way.
Yes, I always can.
Right, right. But, you know, I mean, we've obviously seen the post office move, first of all, recently, and second of all, 20, 30 years from now, one could, I at least could imagine a future where we don't have post offices anymore.
Five years from now.
Right, right, we're going.
Yeah, we see, it's such an American thing.
I know, but
But it's a large piece of property.
Yes, it's a large piece of property. Again, it's not
Condominiums, condos.
Right, right.
There you go, you love these.
Well, I think that's one thing we are gonna have to study, because it seems obvious.
That would be perfect, I think.
But it may not be, when we look at it, but that's one thing we want to study.
The infrastructure is so fragile.
Right, but it is reasonably close, I think, to town, so. Okay?
That's wonderful.
Okay?
Thank you for that, thank you.
All right, so, sorry, yes.
First of all, again, let me repeat my
And could you introduce yourself?
Beau Robinson, I'm the owner on North Sea Road.
Right.
Thank you for picking the ball up on this and moving forward with it, I appreciate that. And again, I commend you for the approach to an overall more comprehensive review. Just a couple of points. One, in my study of it, I called the triangle below Bowden, which is between Windmill Lane and Bowden Square. On the east side of North Sea Road, south of Bowden Square, you have the back of residential properties, they are fairly locked in. It's doubtful that they'll ever change out of residential.
Right, right.
There's no point in trying to address those or change the zone.
Correct.
And then, you get to the restaurant, the public house, which seems probably fairly secure. But the triangle itself, I would ask you to reconsider to have Nelson Pope review that, because that's a fairly defined, small area, most of which already is retail now. You've got English Country Antiques, Kathleen's, and then the vacant lot, there's a store that used to be McLaren's Market, and then the house. And that's pretty much it, there's a residence on the east side of Windmill Lane, but that whole triangle, I think, if one is going to the effort to review all this, there's no point in not including that, because it's, again, mostly predominantly retail now, so nothing is changing in that sense, and it would just incorporate whatever added acreage, which is small, in the legal word, we might call it de minimis, it's relatively minor compared to the whole thing, but I would think it's not worth not including it. The same thing on the west side of Windmill Lane, once you get to Bowden Square, depending upon how you define it, you could define Bowden Square on the west side of Windmill Lane as going all the way to White Street, the north side of White Street, which would include John Bennett's property, and as you know, he's joined in my proposal for this. So, he would be in favor of the review on that. Once you go south of White Street, again, there are only three properties, I think, that are potential candidates to be involved in this, and I don't see why one wouldn't want to consider whatever minor impact that they would have. So, the only thing I would suggest to change on that is to give the review the full, from the cemetery north and from Lola Plantus Park north. I also would support the work of Nelson Pope, as you know, the planning board has worked with them, they do a very credible job. I think, as opposed to other groups, that they are much more technically oriented, they have a pretty good sense of what goes on out here, and a fairly good pragmatic approach to this. The other thing I would suggest is that my own vocabulary on widening North Sea Road from Prospect Street to Bowden Square would be a little bit more aggressive than yours, I think that's something that ought to be done, that there ought to be almost a recommendation from the Planning Commission to try and get an extra, I think 10 feet would do it. By the way, the curving underneath the railroad bridge, curb-to-curb is 48 feet wide, so that's a 12-foot-wide four-lane road under that bridge. But I think going forward, as to looking into the first quarter of the century, the middle of it, that it would be very important, as these properties are developed, to consider that. If you would focus on the property where Schmitz is, that's basically still under one ownership, from Sanford Place to Bowden Square, and if that property was rezoned and then redeveloped at some future time, it's a perfect opportunity to say to the then-owner, well, let's just design this with 10 feet less space on the road. It's a perfect opportunity, wouldn't necessarily involve any condemnation issues, and then once you get to the other side of the street, north of Sanford Place, you've got the nursery, the lynch property there, that also is probably of sufficient area that any kind of redevelopment of that could be done economically, without too much of an impact on the sacrifice of 10 feet, and that would join the two.
Right.
So, I would just say, I would encourage you to be as aggressive as you would think you might to recommend to the trustees or plan into the village future for the next half-century or more, that that actually be a goal of the master plan, that's such an offer. But I thank you for moving forward with this, and the people that I represent that also have joined me, also thank you, we deeply appreciate it.
I was, you know, funny, he mentioned, I was rattling through my head when he came up with that, I was thinking about the businesses to the south of Bowden Square, all the way down, because at the cemetery, that house used to be a boarding house, then there was McLaren's Market, it was Frank's Market, then it was Palmer's Liquor Store, then Morley Agency, then Mrs. Napiorski Houses, which is now Kathleen's Cookie, Canada Dry Warehouse, and Bob Wiggum's Body Shop and Gas Station.
So, it's had a long history of a commercial
Yes.
Okay.
Used to be a Ketrinko there, too.
Yes, Ketrinko, that was, Bud Schwank had that.
Yeah, you've been out there too long.
Okay, so we'll look at that. I think on the traffic, I think we may very well get to exactly what you're talking about, which is to widen the road, I think our thought was, we should first do the traffic study and say, do you need it?
Yeah, the way it is now.
Right.
But eventually, that's such a wonderful thing, because you can have a straight lane and a turning lane going in both directions.
Right.
You don't have to have that center pause lane, which is causing a lot of the difficulties, because you're blocking traffic both ways when that happens.
Right. Okay.
Extend, extend.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you, guys, I gotta go, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I'm hoping that by the next meeting on February 6th, we'll have a proposal from them that we can all talk about and recommend to the trustees. Okay? Sewers, so, let me go back for a second, I just want to set a little context, and then let's talk about it. So, several years ago now, I think when I first went on the commission, there was a lot of conversation in the village about sewers, and there was a short-lived proposal to connect into the sewer facility adjacent to the hospital. And the feedback, I think everyone got, was, let's not talk about sewers until we have some controls in the Village Center. And so, we've done this many-year-long effort to rezon the Village Center, which has now been put into place, and set some, I think, fairly clear parameters going forward for how the Village Center should develop, and I'm hopeful that in the next few years, particularly starting this year in the summer, we'll start to see some of the impacts of some of the ideas in the Village Center zoning. One interesting thing is, a number of, as happens every winter, a number of retail spaces are vacant now, or about to be vacant, both, well, on all the streets, but particularly on Jobs and Main Street, and this will be the first year that businesses will not be able to move into those spaces where they'll have to remain retail. And so, I think we'll begin to see the impact of the new zoning, and should be interesting to see. So, we always said, once that was done, we would go back and look again at the issue of sewers, because we know that there are some significant constraints the current situation places on development in the Village Center. Windmill Lane, in particular, development is almost impossible without addressing the sewage issue. The, all of the businesses in the village right now are constrained by the inability to open new restaurants, which we think would be good for the village, but you can't do because there's no way to drain them. And generally, and, well, we've created zoning that allows, once again, going back to the historic sense of the village, with residential above, that's actually not possible right now because of the circumstance we're in. So, we always said that once that was done, we would look again at sewers, and we've started to do that. And there've been several presentation at these meetings by a group that Suffolk County engaged, talking about what they were doing, how it might apply. So, I asked Mark to talk tonight a little bit about where we are, and I think the first step we want to talk about, because it really is the first step, is what would we potentially include in a sewer district? Because that's really the first step, is what does or does not get included in a sewer district? And then, I think in the coming meetings, begin to talk more about what the potential sites are, what the approach might be, but I thought, let's generally, if Mark, you could catch up up to date on what's been done so far, and then talk about what might be in the district.
Well, for the last year, we've been working with, as you said, the Suffolk Department of Public Works and Suffolk County Health Department to study, and we were to study the requirement and the possibility to construct a wastewater facility. And it's really, the drive behind it is not only in terms of development of the Village Business District, but also the protection of Lake Argua, and also the fact that so many of those septic systems within the Village Business District actually have failed, and they're all built, the owners of those businesses are actually simply pumping out the septic systems, and it's really not functioning. Because of the water table that's rising, and because there is a need of at least three feet of cover between the septic system and the water table, and we don't have that buffer, we cannot prevent to get any Department of Health approval, any permits in that area. So, we work closely with the CDM, who was retained by the county to make a study for the village, and we did study the possible location for the plant, the strapping plant, and the last and the most favored location turned out to be the one that would be right adjacent to the police station, which was right next to the police station in the park, but that plant, that location could be underground, and it's a very, very good location for it's central. And we also defined with, as part of that study, a possible sewer district, which really encompasses basically the Village Business District and all of the surrounding commercial properties. It's, the area is approximately 70 acres, and it's approximately 160 to 165 properties. The possibility to connect to the hospital was abandoned, because the requirement that the Department of Health would put on the hospital if we were to do this was not really feasible. So, that, in terms of, we also reviewed various, in terms of technology, what type of system should we use? So, there was, we looked at basically three types of systems in terms of collections, vacuum system, a gravity system, and a low-pressure system. They're like, it's three, the most widely-used systems for wastewater collection, and for the plant itself, we looked at membrane technology, there's a sequential batch reactor, and basically the membrane technology would be the one that's the most efficient here, but those technical aspects could, you know, still needs to be reviewed. Really, the next step at this stage is to create the sewer district. The creation of the sewer district requires that at least 51% of the people affected directly by the sewer district come to a vote and vote for that creation. And it's, the creation of the sewer district requires an application with the Office of the State Controller, and that really would be the next step. Then, in parallel, we could also continue the, you know, some of the design, some of the engineering required, but the first step is really the creation of the sewer district. So, there was a boundary that was proposed, and I think that during the next meeting, we should review it and make a presentation to the trustees.
I didn't realize you actually have to get a vote from the, because, I mean, you can't force them to
Correct.
So, if they're not forced to, you know, connect to the sewer, why do you need to have a vote?
No, so what happens is that if it is a county district, if, also, when, once you establish the sewer district, you can either do a village district or a county district.
Okay, but that's after the fact.
No, 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 as part of that preparation, if it's a county district, then everybody has to connect within a year.
Okay.
This is in the law, this, you must.
All right.
If it's a village district, the village may allow two or three years or a bit longer, but eventually
Eventually, everybody has to connect.
Yes.
Right, but you can
And it has to be, and it has to be voted by the majority of those that are affected.
Yeah, during the creation, during the creation, to create, if there's, it's a 160 property or
I thought it was just a municipality that could decide, because, let's say they turn it down, and it's a negative effect for the village to turn it down.
Let me, let me, let me pause, it's a good question. The sewer district allows you to charge a fee.
Right.
That's really what it's doing. So, the sewer district says, you can, you can create a line, and everybody within that line has to pay a fee that helps pay off the bonds for whatever facility you build.
Okay.
The other approach, which does not require a sewer district, is you create a facility or you create the ability to connect, and people can voluntarily hook up. The issue with that is that's much harder to finance, obviously, so the village would have to finance that, as opposed to
Become, become a municipal
As opposed to, right, as opposed to privately financing.
I see.
So, if you have a district, you can privately finance, because there's a reliable source of revenue.
Would it be subject to grants, I mean, credit?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, yeah.
As part of
Is it subject to grants one way or the other, whether it's a municipal endeavor
Yes, sure, yes, yeah.
So, we could just go ahead with the municipal endeavor at a certain point, depending on how this turns out.
Right. The question is, who, there is, as you, as part of that study, we did, did apply with environmental funds, the federal funds, for, we did speak to Bishop, and so, an application For, we did speak to Bishop, and so an application was made to get funding for that system. But in terms of, if it's a county district or a village district, it's more in terms of management.
Would it be better to have it as a village district, so that the village has control?
Right.
If it's county, we don't have control.
That's right.
Correct, correct. The county has control, you know, so as you can imagine, in county district, the county has control, but the county puts money into it. A village district, more difficult to get money from the county, but the village retains control. And those are the things, I think, we want to all sort of tell, you know, in our reporting, say, this is what we would recommend, for anyone to think about.
I guess if it's part of the county district, they can also supply the management the expertise that we don't have.
But no, the county, the running of the plant, even if it's a village district, we can still get the county to manage the plant.
Oh.
They can, like, we could get bids for.
Village districts are win-win.
I think so. I think so. In our case, right.
It's more a question of funding and funding available. But in our case, I think a village district is the way to run.
Does it, I mean, if it begins as a village district, does it remain that way?
Yeah.
For always?
I think it pretty much sets the financing and the legal structure.
Okay, because I was just wondering if it does become bigger for, you know, if it could be possibly moved over.
I think it's always to our advantage to have a say and a control. Because if it's in the county, they can really do what they want without listening to us.
It's curious, though, if they manage it, do they expect payment for that?
Yeah, yeah. The management, right.
Either we can hire somebody that knows how to handle it, or we pay them.
See, the district, they would be paying extra tax for their land taxes, the sewer district.
Got you.
So, I mean, that, and that part starts to set how you create boundaries. Because clearly, the people who are going to vote in favor of a sewer district are people who believe that the creation of the district will help their property.
Sure.
So if you have a property that's impacted now, you're more likely to vote for it than if you're on a piece of property that maybe in theory someday could use it, but right now is doing fine.
But I think it all comes down to cost, of course.
Right, right, right.
I mean, I lived in an area that had sewer. I had sewer taxes. I had public water, public sewer as part of my taxes.
But I think that, in our case, though, it goes beyond development, beyond. I think there's real need in terms of public safety.
Environmentally.
Absolutely.
I think that we need to have.
That's why I raised the issue, do they really have to vote for it? Because at a certain point, we need it for the environment.
But the ability to tax, yes, you're adding a tax to those properties, and unfortunately.
And that's, I think, part of the balance, is, on the one hand, the village could do, could say, we're going to create, in effect, a sewer district without the ability to tax, in which case you would need to go through the state process. But then the village would have to be able to basically come up with all the money.
Yeah, they have to.
So that's really the balance. So even though the village might want it, because, obviously, from a conservation point of view, it's extraordinarily important, it's not clear that property owners will vote for it because of the conservation issues.
Right.
Right, I mean.
Right, exactly.
People are, once you get tax people there, it's a harder.
That's why I say at some point, it's important that we have the option of doing it because of the conservation, environmental issues. And quite frankly, since this is a question of quality of life for the village and for everybody that's part of the village, maybe that cost can be spread out, even for those that are not connected. Because in the end, we have to make sure that we have a viable center.
Right.
Paul, there's one thing I want to bring up. I brought this up, is that if we're going to do a sewer district, I was always talking about getting the electrical lines buried.
Right, right, right.
And I think we should do a master plan of the whole village of that. And the village's got a highway crew, and every time they.
It's very interesting, we're just saying that.
Probably going to depend on the type of system, though.
Right, as part of that, as part of the design of the system, in our case, we came up with a layout for the mains to actually be behind the properties. Like, for example, in this case here, you know.
But we're not talking gravity, though, because gravity.
No, gravity, no. Really, the favorite system would be what's called a low-pressure system, where you have, where everything is pumped. And where we are putting the collectors is really behind the property, in the parking areas, where, right now, the septic systems are going. So there would be minimal cost to the property owners or to relocate their piping inside. So we would just go where the septic systems are. So it's not where the electrical lines are. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that if we do a complete plan of the village, that when they do a road project, like Mayor Romanowski finally fixed First Neck Lane, a year later, they were digging it up, replacing gas lines. I mean, but I'm looking at.
Happened everywhere.
Is, if the village is going to do a road, and they have a master plan saying, you need so many conduits, four inches lined, there's so many splice boxes, and they bury this stuff in the ground, not putting the wires in, but put part of the infrastructure in and have it there. So when you do start changing it, it'll be done on a gradual basis.
Right. That's a good point.
Yeah, it is, it's nice, but it's two different entities, right?
Yes, and it's really a pros and cons.
It's, was it the successor to Keispan, National Grid?
But now it's P S N G.
Now it's P S E N G, yeah.
P S E N G. Have I seen your map?
How deep do the electrical have to be?
I believe, I don't know about the voltage, but normally, it's usually 24 inches to ground.
Right, okay. Because if you have the low-pressure system, it's not very deep, it's maybe three feet or so.
Yes.
The other thing is, I was told, well, the old time is, before the war, they were supposed to do Job's Lane underground. That was supposed to be done. And the war came, and it just never happened.
Right, right.
Do you know what they put in the ground there at Bowden Square recently as part of that highway?
Good question, I don't know.
I saw they put stuff to pens.
Drainage.
Drainage, it's stone water.
Just stormwater drainage.
Stone water drainage.
They put in these huge things.
What it is, is they want to catch the water coming off of North Main Street, coming down across Bowden Square, going down. So they're intercepting that water supply.
And pushing it.
And stopping it from going down Windmill Lane into Lake Agawam.
So it's held, so it's getting there.
So it's filtered, and eventually it percolates out.
But eventually, it goes there.
Yeah, eventually, but it gets filtered when it goes underground.
Yeah, so it basically, right, exactly. It's, it holds it, it filters it, and then it gradually percolates out. But so you don't, in a storm, what happens is the flow overwhelms all the vectors, and it just flows right into the lake. And that's when you have the worst damage.
Nobody could build on top of that, could they?
Well, it's village property.
Yeah.
No, it couldn't, no.
And the village did the same thing up by the highway on North Main Street. The sump is for the same reason.
Yeah, that's, yeah, right, right. Okay, I was just curious, what the.
Right, I mean, I think as part of the approach, in the village working with the Lake Agawam Association, part of the approach has been to do fairly small-scale stuff that would begin. And the lake has actually got better, just enough. So the village has been doing ways to collect along the routes to the lake. And then the property owners around the lake have been changing the way they do their lawns and fur and fertilizer, so you don't have the same flow into the lake.
Yeah, there was a thing in Mill Pond, I read an article about, you know, that guy that came to talk to us about the phosphorus and stuff.
Right, right, right.
And it's been very successful.
Right.
I'm amazed they're working on it.
Yeah. Well, Lake Agawam's definitely got better. I mean, there's, you know, they've been monitoring it now for five, six years. That's not the problem, by the way, it turns out.
I think one of our biggest problems is going to be the Don Geese, once we get all the stuff done.
But that apparently is not what's causing the degradation in the lake. I mean, it's not, it's hell, but it's really from underneath.
And also, aren't the bathrooms, they're just going right in there, aren't they? The bathrooms over there on Agawam Park.
I think they did something about that.
Did they do something about that?
I think they did something about that, yeah.
I think we should have a community goose dinner sometime.
Going over the deer dinner in East Hampton, right?
Yeah, we'll have the deer dinner, and then the goose dinner.
So. So.
Can I keep this, Mark?
Yeah, sure.
So I think maybe we should do a workshop at one point to sort of talk more specifically about what we think the district should be.
Right.
And also an explanation.
That's really the next step, is to retain.
Right. I thought we were going to enlarge this.
Yes, we are going to, yes. This is going to include this area.
Right. Mark, this, this area.
Which area?
No, 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 this columnium, this is the village.
Oh, where's the village flash?
Right here.
Oh, that's the village flash.
This is here, yeah, this needs to include.
It does include, oh, no, it's going to go up.
No, it's going to modify the slide.
I think there's one thing, where the location of the sewer treatment plant is, is to have the people understand, you're not going to, you know, the old-fashioned sewer treatment plant, like Riverhead's got, I play golf there, at the county court, you go past it, and you know there's a sewer treatment.
This type of sewer treatment plant, I mean, the one we were looking at was called the membrane technology. They've used it many times in Long Island, and you cannot, it's a small building. We could have it half-resessed into the ground, and there's really, really, really.
Well, I think, I don't think that it's the building itself is what they're concerned about, it's the odors.
The odors, there are ways to treat it, but there isn't.
So membrane technology with a low-pressure system, is that what you said?
I don't know what they have in Hampton Rehab's, but I've been in Salham Hospital Treatment Plant, test their backflow devices.
No.
And the Salham Hospital is an old facility.
It's, that's absolutely, yesterday's technology.
And then, when I go into rehab, you just about, you don't smell anything outside, but you smell faint odor inside the building, but that's about it. But you've got to make this point across, because as soon as you mention sewer treatment plant, red flags go flying.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, it would be helpful, maybe, you know, if there's an example of one that people.
Yes, yes. And as part of that study, they took us to see various plants.
Yeah, what towns? Because there were some they talked about that.
No, I don't have the, right.
Right, but we should go back to them.
Yes, we should go back to them.
Okay.
Well, this is certainly a nice first step, I think.
Also, the other advantage to go with a village district, rather than a county district, is the procurement aspect, is how we, if we go with a county district, then it has to be procured in a certain way, and the timetable is much, much longer. Maybe about eight to 10 years. Whereas if we go with a village district, at that point, we could do either even design-build, we can go with, even maybe, there are companies, there are Canadian companies and European companies, that actually will develop it and charge and manage it completely.
Yeah, if we do expand it, don't you have to get permission from the health department to do any changes to your district?
Right. Well, it's not the health department, but it's.
And that's usually, you can't seem to get away from. I mean, if the village has it, the village has control maybe over the operation. But if they want to expand the district, they've got to get permission from the county health department to expand the district.
They still do, but at least you have control over how it operates.
I wouldn't think they would look at it favorably, because I think the health department wants us to get rid of the sewers, I mean, of the septic. I wouldn't imagine we'd find any resistance there.
On Long Island, where we're so dependent on groundwater.
Yeah.
You know, if I can think about, I have a book that came out of Stony Brook University, historical. It has a whole thing on Long Island groundwater, and how many people Long Island can support. And they did this study in 1959, 1960, they came out with it. And I think Suffolk County can support like 2.5 million. After we hit 2.5 million, we're in trouble.
Let's build more concrete.
We don't have enough water spot.
Right, we can't be that close from, that far from there.
I think we got, what, a million and a half or something, a million and three-quarters?
We're riding it, never by the edge, huh?
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Fabulous, great.
So February 6th?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll call around about maybe doing a workshop before or after that? Maybe after that, since February 6th is fairly soon.
Yep.
We'll call this together. Great, happy new year, everyone.
Happy new year.